Side of the table, ready? Yep. You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Staff, ready? All right. I'm going to call to order this March 25th, 2025, meeting of the Kerrville City Council. Let's start with an invocation pledge led by our mayor pro tem, Brenda Hughes.
Stand by with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together tonight and ask for your blessing as we conduct the city's business. Guide us in our decision-making and help us to listen to your voice above all others. We thank you for the glorious rain in spite of the hail. Let us all rejoice in the good with the bad. We humbly ask that with more rain, you heal our dry land, fill our river, grow our fields, feed our livestock, and nourish our abundant wildlife. We ask for protection from potential fires that threaten our parched ground and that you cover our first responders with a blanket of protection as they continue to protect and serve us. We thank you for all you give and ask for blessings of peace and grace. We ask these things in your son's precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, are you ready?
I am. Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to everybody tonight. And if you'll look up at the screen, we want to invite everybody next Tuesday. You came out this Tuesday, so let's come out again next Tuesday at 4:30. We're going to cut the ribbon on the brand-new playground at Guadalupe Park. Now, I say "brand-new," my son grew up on that playground, but all that old equipment has been removed and we've got a brand-new inclusive playground coming in. When I say "inclusive," it means it's welcoming for children of all abilities, including those with physical, sensory, or cognitive disabilities. So completely redesigned, we're really looking forward to cutting the ribbon at 4:30, inviting everybody to that. We'll also have a playground opening the same day at Guadalu-- I mean, Kerrville-Shriner Park. So two new playgrounds opening on one day next week. Okay, Saturday, April 12th, there's still time to sign up for the skateboard competition. The Parks Recreation does this every year. 10:00 AM start. The entrance, it goes from five years and up, although I've covered that for several years now, and I have not seen anybody over 25. So I think your sense of self-preservation kicks in somewhere. But it's a lot of fun to go out there, and so we encourage everybody who wants to come out and watch that. It's just as much fun, I think, as participating in it, probably a lot safer. Probably shouldn't say that. I don't want to discourage people from signing up for it. Come on out and see it. And we'll talk about it more as we get closer, but everybody should pencil in April 26th. That is going to be the 75th anniversary of Louise Hayes Park. I know the mayor has written some stuff about the park built in a day, a pretty impressive story, but we encourage everybody to go ahead and mark that on your calendar. We're going to have some live music, local vendors, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Encourage everybody to come out. And then also, we wanted to go over this because we had, as, it's Sunday, we had a bit of a hailstorm. Some people may have not known that, but it kind of got a little rough. And we've had some people in town this week who are promoting stuff, so we just wanted to remind you, the solicitation regulations, so nobody can come to your house between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM unless you ask them to. There's no selling or soliciting in city streets, medians are rights away, and they have to respect your "no soliciting and no trespassing" signs. So if you have that up, they can't come up either. So if you have any problems with that, you're welcome to call the Kerrville Police Department. They'll be happy to help you out. And that's it for me. I'll turn it over to you all if you all have any announcements.
Thank you. The Guadalupe Street Park. I'm the one that cut the ribbon on the last playground, 30 years, 32 years ago. I asked my son, who participated in that ribbon-cutting, if he'd care to join me again because he was about eight when we cut that ribbon, and he's declined to do so this time. Mr. Harris.
Bear with me, this is a little emotional, so I got hit today with something that's a reality, and it, one, this one event today will affect at least, at least 50 people. If you know somebody that's struggling with demons or is going through a rough patch in life, reach out to them. Pick up the phone. If you don't know what to do, call the police department, call the sheriff's office, call 988. It's a suicide crisis line. You know, I lost a Navy veteran friend of mine today that's leaving his-- well, it's actually yesterday, but he's leaving his wife and his kids because demons that he couldn't deal with. So if y'all know of anybody, intervene. It can just be one quick little, "Hey, Mayor, how are you?" Gets them off track. Something, it can derail where they're at. General Oates here in town has the best story about it because he was walking the barracks when he was a colonel, and there was a young man in his barracks room, and Mike stopped by to talk to him. Three weeks later, this young man was transferring off base, going to another one, and he stopped by and he said, "Sir, do you remember me?" He goes vaguely. He goes, "You stopped by and talked to me about my Dallas Cowboys fan on my wall." He goes, "I had a .45 under my pillow. I was going to end my life that night. You stopped and you talked to me. You changed my direction." What happened yesterday is gone, but if you know somebody out there that needs help, please reach out to them. It's nothing that anybody needs to go through for something like that when there's help available. So, thank you.
I do have something to say.
Please, go ahead.
So Kent and I sit on the Recovery Coalition Committee Board, which is designed to help those that want to get into recovery, but it also ties in with healthy mental health. So they have something they've been doing for the last year, which would help in a situation like this. Sometimes folks are not comfortable walking into church or to an official clinic, but this organization called CHIL, which stands for Community Has It, Let's Live. Every third Saturday of every month, they meet at Louise Hayes Park from 11:00 to 2:00. It's free. They have barbecue, they have sober drinks, they have sober activities, they have music. Occasionally, they take a bowling alley trip or something and do something off-site, but think about that. That next one would be April 19th at Louise Hayes Park from 11:00 to 2:00, and anyone's invited. Anyone. Someone could walk up that's maybe homeless, could walk right over and be welcomed. So that ties in with what you're saying, is sometimes if you could just get people to meet other people, even just to say hello and make them, let them know they're welcome. They're, we want to keep them on this earth, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Thanks to both of you. Let's move on to presentations. Brother Sam, will you meet me down front, please? Let me introduce Sam Ligon, who is, has a resolution of commendation, and let me read it. Whereas Sam Ligon has served as a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustments, the date of service starting October 1st, 2021, and whereas Sam Ligon has faithfully served on said board, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Texas, that Sam Ligon be recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustments, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Thank you. Sam, you want to say a few words? Not a whole sermon.
Not a whole sermon. Well, let me tell you something that happens in our city. You mentioned it, you mentioned it, I think you mentioned it. I was loading some groceries in the back of my car at Walmart one day, and it was early in the morning, and I was going up, and a guy came wandering across the parking lot. He stopped right by me. He said, "Sir, do you have anything I could eat?" I said, "I don't have anything in here that's prepared," but I reached in my pocket and I pulled out a seal and I said, "Put right over there, it's covers. This will cover anything in that building that you want to eat." So that's the way people do people here. I appreciate being a part of this community.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
All right. We have a presentation for the Hill Country Crisis Council, and I would invite anybody with that group to come on up. Everybody, come on up. Don't be shy. Don't be shy.
Should I?
Mayor, may we invite one of the council members down as well? Oh, he's already on his way.
Let's make a whole row here. Here's what we're going to do, if that's okay. I'm going to read this proclamation, and then I want to go down the line, and you tell your name and how you're associated with Hill Country Crisis Council. Fair enough? All right, here's what we'll do. It is a proclamation of the City of Kerrville, whereas children are our nation's most vulnerable members, as well as our most valuable resources, helping to shape the future of Texas; and whereas positive childhood experiences, like loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships, can help mitigate trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences to promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children; and whereas childhood trauma could have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations of their family. I'm almost done. Whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every community in the United States, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone; and whereas prevention is possible because of the partnerships created between Texas families, prevention advocates, child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and local, state, and national governments; and whereas we recognize the need to prioritize children and invest in more prevention initiatives like home visiting and family strengthening policies, economic support, and community-based child-- please, that baby's fine. You do not--
No child poisoning.
--but home visiting, family strengthening policies, economic support, and community-based child abuse prevention programs at the national, state, and local levels. Now therefore I, Joe Harry Jr., Mayor of the City of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim April 25th, I'm sorry, April 2025, as child abuse prevention line, and as happy as such. Thank you. Why don't we go down the row and just say your name and your association with the Crisis Council, and if you have something else you'd like to say, you're welcome to do it. Please go ahead.
So I'm Brett Ives, Chief Executive Officer for Hill Country Crisis Council, and what I would say is, you talked a little bit about it, but the partnerships that we have in this community with law enforcement, Department of Family and Protective Services, our prosecutors, and other child-serving organizations is a huge lift to what we do. It takes a team, and one thing that I would leave you with is that child sexual abuse is absolutely something that can be ended. It absolutely can.
I'm Kim Olden, I am the Chief Programs Officer.
I'm Laurie Simpson, I'm a member of the Volunteer Board of Directors.
My name is Sarah, and I'm a supporting spouse. This is Gemma, and this is Ruby.
I'm Kristen Hendrickson, the Chief Financial Officer of Hill Country Crisis Council.
Alicia Valentine Moore, I'm the Shelter Operations Manager.
I'm Sam Honeycutt, I'm a member of the Volunteer Board of Directors as well.
I'm Yvonne Munoz, a member of the Board of Directors as well.
Melanie Thane, Treasurer of the Board of Directors.
I'm Amy Harding, actually with Hill Country Casa, and we're one of the partner agencies with Hill Country Crisis Council and on their multidisciplinary team.
Good afternoon, my name is Kane Jaggers, I'm the Senior Regional Director with SGRC Texas Belong, and we are a partner of the Hill Country Crisis Center.
I'm Larry Thane, and I'm a supporting spouse as well.
Jeff Whinley.
I'm a boardman. Jeff Harrison, Laurie failed to mention she's the Vice President of the Board. Fixing to be the President when I roll off in a couple of months as the President.
Hi, I'm Natalie Sandoval, these are my children, Jonah and Allison Sandoval. We were, we are clients, and I just want to let everyone know that this council saved our lives and supported us in a time when no one else did, so thank you so much, and we're so happy to be here.
I'm Tori Heathley, sorry for the chaos. I'm the Director of Forensic Services over at Kids Out of Sea Place, and then it's my little man, Marshall, and can you tell him your name?
My name is Charlie.
I'm Haley Spencer, I'm the Director of MDT Response at Kids Out of Sea Place.
And I'm Taylor Collins, and I'm the Chief Development Officer.
Let's hold up that proclamation. We somehow are trying to get a picture. Everybody kind of clapped together. There's another gentleman.
Especially Charlotte. She did.
That's a great organization, the Department.
Years ago, when I was involved in city government, we didn't do stuff like that. I don't know why we didn't, because I think sometimes that is the most delightful part of our community, to recognize those people in our community who are doing good things for others, and I love that part. I also thank Kelly and Shelley sometimes try to give me tongue-twisters to say out loud. All right. Next is the Doyle Center, Ms. Cardenas. Cardenas. You can pull it down, it's okay.
Okay. Sorry, I'm short. Howdy, everybody. I'm Ray Cardenas, I am the Executive Director of the Doyle Community Center, and we're located in the heart of the Doyle community at 110 West Barnett Street. And we always got something going on, for all ages, all-inclusive. Our vision is to be a place where needs are met, lives are enriched, and potential is achieved. Our mission is uniting people and resources to provide quality services that are accessible to the Doyle community and to the Kerrville community at large. We have become a bit of an information resource center for everybody that calls. There's people that confuse us with multiple organizations, and we never hang up and say, "Sorry, try again." We always point people in the right direction, we hand out senior citizens guides. So we do a lot of different things. We have food services, historical and cultural events and programs throughout the year, but everything that we do is done with three key goals in mind, which are community, health, and education. And so when we are planning for some of our existing programs and events, or trying to brainstorm on new programs and events, we always keep these three goals in mind, and everything we do obviously includes the community, but everything else at least hits two out of three, if not all three, of these key goals, which is community, health, and education. So our goal is to help people achieve "she," in a sense, making sure everybody feels welcomed and is heard. We have an array of programs and services. Some of the services we have is a food pantry every Wednesday from 11:00 to 1:00 PM. Our food pantry services 60 to 65 households a week. 25 of those households are homebound, so we do have a delivery service. For those that are seeking food assistance, it is for the Doyle community, but anybody that walks through the door, front door, does not leave empty-handed. They do receive groceries and help, as well as an array of information on other resources here in the community. We really rely on our partners, and we help our partners just as much as they help us. So anybody coming in for food assistance, whether they're from the community or not, are helped. We do have a transportation service, and in January, it was on hiatus due to repair, so we have furthered our partnership with ACOG, making sure people are in touch with the Art Bus and the new app that is doing great things. I've heard some great things. But our transportation service is for essential needs such as the going to and from doctor's appointments, hospital visits, the post office, grocery stores, pharmacies, and bank runs. Just this past year, for 2024, we scheduled over 300, 302, I believe, we scheduled 302 transportations, and out of 302, 273 were successfully executed. So we're always trying to make sure we get people where they need to be, and we really love talking to people here and there during our transportation. We also have an emergency medical and dental plan for those in the community. We kind of spread it word by mouth, but those that know that the assistance is there, they come in. It says by appointment up there, but they usually call and we tell them to come in, and we get an application to them, and it's reviewed within 24 hours, so we get them in touch with dental, medical, whatever they need. And for those that we help, just for the initial appointment, we help make sure that they are, if it's a continuing issue, they are pointed in the right direction to get the help that they need. But those are just some of the specific services that are for the people in the community, but we always are open to anybody that walks through the front door. We have an array of programs such as Senior Lunch and Bingo, which Senior Lunch is just in there, it is inclusive to all ages. Through the summer, we see a bunch of kids come with their grandparents, which it's a lot of great time. We have music, we have food, we have bingo. For those that can't come to lunch, they come later that night for game night, where there's more bingo and an array of games. Due to our partnership with the Hill Country League of Women Voters, we have citizenship class, citizenship classes every Thursday. It initially started from 6:00 to 7:00, but then slowly became 5:30 to 7:30, and then 5:00 to 7:30, just because people need that one-on-one tutoring and extra help. But since the beginning of this arrangement with the League of Women, which was started in 2022, we've been able to successfully graduate 42 individuals to have their citizenship, actually just three this past month. So that's awesome. I love meeting all those people, and their celebrations are even greater. We have also, due to our arrangement with the League of Women Voters, we have English as a Second Language class on Tuesdays. We have a beginners' course from four to five, and then an intermediate course from 5:00 to 6:00, and that program has grown substantially. Actually, I had to have a meeting prior to this meeting about expanding into a larger room because both classes are at capacity and we're going to have to make more space. So those have been going great as our existing programs. Something new that we started in the fall was our after-school lounge. We were trying to bridge the gap between our youth and our graduation celebration. Every year, we do a graduation celebration to uplift those seniors in the community that are graduating from Hill Country High and Tybee High School. So we started an after-school lounge to try to get to know them a little bit more beforehand, try to see what they're looking into post-high school, whether it's continuing education, vocational trade, or right into the workforce. That was the idea, but the young, younger group and our middle school kids have found it, and they love it. I got ambushed just the other day, walking around the parking lot, trying to get my car keys out. They have found a second home in that after-school lounge. As of last fall, we were seeing about six to seven kids daily, but with the fall extracurriculars being over and the nice spring weather coming around, we have, we are at capacity, and in a great way. But the after-school lounge is new, it's still working on different ideas and programmings because it's mostly school tutoring and homework help, as well as different social engagement and social skills. The after-school lounge is help facilitated by the Shriner, Shriner University Meaningful Works Department. We have a grant study going on, so we have soon-to-be teachers that are in there, getting a sense of what it's like to be teachers. A few of them have been rethinking middle school, but they are loving the kids in the program, and their feedback, as well as the kids' feedback, has been great to hear. And we're always looking for new things to do, you know, with K-Star and youth development. Due to our rich historical and heritage, we always do a mixture of Black History Month programs, as well as Hispanic Heritage programs throughout the year. And some of the new things that we've started is, we had teamed up with the Healthy Men Harvesting Hope Group to put on a haunted hallway. They have always been a group that did trunk-or-treating in our pavilion, so just to add on to some of the things that we do, we did a haunted hallway. And we did a toy drive for the holidays, and then after we got in, the toys, we didn't know what to do with them and how to get them to the kids. So we came up with a community Christmas, and we were able to get 93 kids a good Christmas this year. And for the excess that we had, we shared with the Women's Shelter and K-Star, not just gifts, but gift-wrapped bows and bags. And so it's been really great to be a part of something. I'm new. Actually, today is my one-year anniversary to being with the Doyle Center. It's been really great seeing all the different organizations and how it is an intertwined agency of people helping people, and so I'm happy to be a part of it. And that being said, we've been able to strengthen existing partnerships with Methodist Healthcare Ministries, the HEB Butt Foundation, Shriner University, and cultivate new partnerships with K-Star, Texas Legal Services, MHDD, and the list goes on and on. But everything we do is completely based off of individual donations, grant funding, and our sponsors and partners. And so we really rely on our community and our friends, and just as much as we lean on them, they lean on us, so we strengthen each other. That's all I got. Thank you. Any questions?
Would you mind introducing the people on your board who are here tonight, the supporters that are here tonight?
Yes. Ms. Madam President, Nartasha Saunders. Our Board Secretary, Jeremy Walter. Board Member, Bessie Pfeifer. And our Community Coordinator, Clifton Pfeifer, Jr.
Thank you for that excellent presentation. As you know, and as the community may not know, the city provides a grant to the Doyle Center in an amount of $7,000 a year, and has for the past four years. In addition, in that neighborhood, going back to 2011, the city-- In addition, in that neighborhood, going back to 2011, the city has provided approximately $46,000 worth of action items for the Doyle community. So we're one of your partners.
Well, we appreciate it.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, ma'am.
A while back, the idea came up, maybe the city has some computers that we weren't using anymore, and I don't know if the teen lounge has a need for anything like that, but there was at one time, and so I didn't know if there still was a need with your tutoring. If you were interested, I could talk to our departments and see if there's any that we're not going to use any longer, that we can scrub and donate, if you think there's a need. That was just an idea that, at the time, we talked about it, and I didn't know there was still.
Yeah, we got two computers donated, but with the spring, everybody coming back in with the wonderful weather, they were fighting over it this afternoon. So we're all learning to share, but they would be much appreciated.
Okay. Well, I don't know if we do. I haven't even asked, but I will, so.
Well, awesome. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming, and thank you for bringing your current with you.
I have one.
Oh, go ahead.
It's kind of a Doyle deal, but Clifton, you're doing something on the first with Mr. Hardy again?
Right. We're, we're going to throw out the first pitch at the Tyvee High School game. He's an inductee into the Negro National Man League, was four of them inducted back in 2015. He's the only one left alive, and I think he may be one of three players that actually played with the Curville All-Stars that are still alive. The other two are in Austin, unable to travel. But we're excited about having that opportunity. He's extremely excited about it, and he's been practicing his throws.
That'll be April the first at Tyvee at 6:00 p.m.
He threw out that first pitch at Shriners. Any other comments? All right. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Shelley, did we have anybody sign up to speak to us?
No, sir.
Right. The next item is the Consent Agenda. All items are considered routine and can be approved in one motion unless a council member, staff, or member of the public asks for separate consideration of an item. Does anyone want to pull an item from the Consent Agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Items 4A and 4B on the Consent Agenda.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Passes unanimously. All right. Item 5A, a request for a variance from the one-half-mile distance requirement per Section 30-16 of the Code of Ordinances as required between boarding home facilities. Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request from the half-mile distance variance for the, between boarding homes. There is an existing boarding home at 976 Barnett, is about 530 feet from 504 Tyvee Here's the site plan of the existing structures, converting the front residence into the boarding home. And there is the floor plan. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions, before or after the public hearing.
Would you care to say anything before the public hearing?
Yes.
Please go ahead. If you don't mind stating your name and address for the record, we record these because...
My name is Claire Booth, and I'm at 504 Tyvee. And my husband and I, right now, operate an Airbnb in that property, and we'd like to convert it to a lodging home for the elderly. I have three suites in the main building, and then one little bungalow. Each has their own bedroom, sitting area, private bathroom, little kitchenette-type thing. I mean, they can't cook in there, but they have a microwave and their coffee pot and that. And then we have a common area, and what I don't have is a kitchen kitchen. So that's what I'd like to do, is remodel and add on that in a dining area. But we would like to have the elderly be there and have a nice place that someone can watch over them and be there in case of emergency, but it's not anything medical. It's just like, you know, we don't want mom to be by herself. There's somebody there. If they can drive, we have a parking lot, so nobody would be out in the street, and we live on the property itself, so there would always be someone there. So that's what I'm asking for, is a variance to change my, our Airbnb into a group home for the elderly.
Any questions for Ms. Booth? Let me ask a question. Should we grant this? Is there anything preventing you from, at a future time, changing it back to an Airbnb or changing it to a group home for other, some other group?
It could go back to an Airbnb, possibly. We've had it for seven years now.
I remember you building it.
But we'd like to, we'd just like to do it for some of the elderly, because I know that's one of the largest pieces of our population in Curville, and we don't really want to go to a nursing home or an assisted-care home yet, but we would like somebody maybe to be there for us just in case.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Booth? Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to open up a public hearing at 6:35. Anyone who wishes to speak can speak to this item.
We do have one citizen speaker signed up also.
Good. And who is that?
Maria Ramona, and I'm just...
Come on up. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi. My name is Maria Ramona Musabian, and I live at 508 Tyvee, which is right behind her property, and I just wanted to say that it would be a welcome place for her to do that. She has a very, very nice property, very well-kept, so there's no problems. We've had a real good relationship with them.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to let you know that I am in favor of it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else wish to speak? Right. Close the public hearing at 6:36. Council, do you have any questions for staff? Do you have any discussion on this item?
Well, you know, if you live long enough, you get to see the same thing again. So about seven years ago, when I was on council before, about five miles east of your facility, a home came up, was approaching us to be closer than the one-half mile. I think at that time, we hadn't even designated a certain distance. And we had a lot of neighbors that were concerned, that came to us with that concern that, you know, you're going to have five or six here if you don't have some type of regulation that keeps them, where they're not all grouped together. So at that time, we came up with this half-mile distance, and I still stand by that, because I do believe that I have to represent the, all of the community. As much as I think what you're doing is wonderful, I, I think to change this at this point might set the precedence for others to say, well, let me do it now. Let me come try. And then we're back to the same problem we had seven years ago. So, you know, I'm going to stick to my guns on what we decided personally, as far as keeping this one-half-mile distance. I'm sorry. I drove the neighborhood on Sunday. It didn't look like your parking was an issue or anything, and I had questions about the suites, one person per suite, that type thing, but that really doesn't, shouldn't weigh into my decision about this one-half-mile distance. So I wanted you to know my history and my thinking.
Mr. Paxton, I'm going to come back to you as a former commissioner on planning and zoning, and, because we went through the STR deal together. I want to say that, but if it's an STR, and then we go to a senior living facility, once you give up the STR, isn't it done and over with?
Excuse me. Depends on the base zoning. Off the top of my head, this is zoned RT, which would allow the short-term rental.
Okay. I see our fire marshal over here. I'm going to ask him a question now. So, Mr. Lackey, your department, you ought to go in as marshals and invest, or inspect these properties, correct?
When it comes to group homes or lodging homes or boarding homes, yes, sir.
And STRs or anything like that?
Not, we don't inspect STRs.
We're fixing to have another conversation about this in a minute, but if it's going to be a senior home, are they going to have to have code, current code policy on something like this, since it will be occupied by senior citizens?
Yes, sir. The change you use would require it to come up to current code, and also we have the 2018 IFC, or International Fire Code and International Living Code adopted, so it would have to meet those standards.
So it would require sprinkler system on this one, too?
As per code, yes, sir.
Thank you. Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but you're here.
That's okay, sir.
Okay. Ma'am, do you have fire suppression in the facility right now?
I do not, but I've called two people on it, because I told Mr. Lackey I had to have that, so I've definitely checked and all that, seen the lights and everything, so I have two people coming, giving codes on it.
Okay.
So yes, that would be included.
So we have all, we have different kinds of group homes, and they're all, no matter what kind of category they're in, we've got them all one lump. Is there, how much sense does that make, or is it, where do we, do we think about having different categories and maybe have different? I don't know. I mean...
I wasn't on the council seven years ago. Is there a reason that was all lumped together?
It was mainly because of parking, honestly. That particular case was, and you're right, Kent, a lot of these are unique. They're not all black and white and gray. There's gray and there's, you know, it's all kinds of, they're different. They're all different. But my thinking is, you know, we want, we want to maintain what we, our consistency with some of these decisions we've made, and if we look at it like, well, let's take it on a case-by-case basis, we're creating a lot of, you know, variable work and change that I don't think the original thinkers of this wanted. So I, I still just think that we should have at least the one-half-mile distance, if nothing else. And I understand this is a different...
Mostly because of parking, as far as you're concerned.
Yeah, plus, you know, if you had any other business, if you want to call it this, inundating a neighborhood, that's not healthy for the neighborhood, I don't think, no matter what it is. I think that neighborhoods are meant to be for single-family homeowners, and parking and other issues can be a problem. So that's the reason we let's it at least keep this distance, so there's not two or three on a single side of a street. And, you know, I like to think they all will be wonderful facilities. I'd like to think that, but there have been times when they're not, and I know they get checked, and I know they get monitored, and they get permitted, and that's all fine and good, but I guess I'm, if we don't have, if we didn't have this one-half mile, you might have five or 10 on one street, and I do think that's a change of use of that, the intent of that neighborhood, of that street.
But I do have a complete parking lot, private parking lot.
I'm sorry to make comments. You really have to come to the microphone, because we have to, we have to record this.
No, and like I said, I drove by your house, and the parking looked fine on a Sunday afternoon, but that's not really the question, really. So the question really is about the one-half mile part of this request.
We did the same thing with PMZ on STRs. We set a restriction, so I know what you're saying.
Brenda?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for staff. First of all, are, I guess, nursing homes, for lack of a better term, are they permitted by the city?
Nursing homes are not, because they're permitted by the state, because they have a state health license.
They are permitted by the state?
Correct.
Are they required to be licensed?
Well, that would be the licensing, yes.
Okay. Were in, were neigh, were neighbors, were letters sent to all the neighbors in the area about this variance?
Yes, within the 200 feet of this property.
I didn't notice a sign.
It's, it's not a zoning issue, so we didn't put signs up. Yes, ma'am. So the, the facilities that are licensed by the state are not required to get the group home permit, because they already have the state oversight.
Okay, so who makes sure that they have their licensing in place?
The state.
Do we have an inspection system?
We do not, since the state regulates the medical needs of those facilities, they all, all go through the state agencies.
Okay.
Excuse me. We do inspect their kitchens for their health permit.
Okay. And I believe the reason, at least when I got on council, the reason we put in the, that buffer space was to keep there from being clusters of group homes, or sober-living homes, or STRs, all lumped together in one segregated area. So that was my reasoning for standing behind the, you know, the half-mile buffer, so.
Any other discussion? So what I think I'm hearing is this would not be regulated, it's not a nursing, you don't have a common kitchen for everyone, or are you going to have a common kitchen?
That's what I was trying to do.
I'm sorry, you have to come to the microphone. I'm sorry to make you stand up again, but you're going to have a common kitchen for these residents.
Yes.
That would be inspected by the city. And you understand you would be required to have a sprinkler or fire suppression...
Yes, I knew that. Yes, sir.
I think Mr. McKinney has a valid point, that we may need to revisit this ordinance to see if there are categories, if there are differences in categories.
I was going to think about it, maybe.
Yeah, maybe, and I understand the problem with, about the parking, too. Do you anticipate a lot of these reses would be drivers, or do you think they would not...
Probably not that much. I mean, we have four suites, so I would figure one person for each, and I've got, if each of them did have a car, we have plenty of parking for more than that, because already it's an Airbnb.
Right.
And we have Airbnbs all around us, everywhere. So we'd be taking it out of the Airbnb unit and putting it into a lodging home for the elderly.
We had somewhat of a traumatic experience with STRs up here, short-term rentals, and we're still gun-shotting about those.
Mine is only to adults.
No, you're fine, and you were in the, you're in the correct zoning forum.
Yes.
But the ones that were popping up in residential neighborhoods was, that was a problem.
We found out all about this before we did anything to, because it was our office building to begin with, and then we came in to see if we could change it to it.
Does the tree still make those big balls that we used to destroy each other?
Yes, sir.
When I was a child?
I cut one down.
Mr. Paxton, anything to add?
That's all I have.
Staff, anything to add? All right. Thank you, ma'am. I think you can sit down.
Thank you.
Any discussion, guys? I am ready to hear what y'all want to do, in the form of a motion. Not all at once.
The floor has a request for a variance. I need a motion to allow the variance or to deny the variance.
I'll make the motion to deny the variance.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second to deny the variance. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to deny, raise your hand. And opposed, I'm the only one. Four to one.
So I do think it would be good to check out, you know...
I do, too.
I mean, it might, I think we want to try to follow the, you know, the rules we've set, but we need to maybe look at the rules and see if things are changing and what kind of things we're getting approached about.
I, I think we should revisit, Mr. Rice, are you hearing us? We probably need to revisit that and see if there's a will to designate what types of facilities require this distance, what buffer distance. If I, my memory serves correctly, and I wasn't on council during that time, the problem was not, was not some types of homes, it was the rehab homes.
Sober homes.
Sober homes.
Which was, is different, I understand, yeah.
Okay. So, thank you for coming. I appreciate your time, and we are going to move to the next item. Item 6A, Presentation of Audit Overview. Ms. Behrens, does this involve numbers?
Hopefully, just a few, and if you, I'm going to have to get a stool, I've decided, for back here. It's a little bit taller than I'm used to. So I really don't have a big presentation for you tonight. I do have Kevin Kemp, who's a partner with Forvis Mazars. They are our audit firm. As you know, we've engaged them back last summer when we brought the agreement to you. We started our work in August, so we've become very good coworkers and colleagues over the last several months, and actually, the last several years that they've been with us and performing these audits. You do have the Act for that I sent you in email form. It's also available on the website. We will have hard copies of those for you, but Kevin's going to walk us through audit, how that works, present some high-level summary information, and then some information on the Act for, but we can obviously dive into more detail if that's something that you would choose to do at a later time. There you go.
Thank you. Drew?
Thank you, Julie. Mayor, members of City Council, appreciate a few minutes of your time tonight to go over the results of the fiscal year end September 30th, 2024 audit. I will promise to be brief and not talk a lot of numbers. So anyway, we appreciate the time to be here. First couple of slides for those that have been on council for a little bit. I think over the past four years, I've came with three different names. Probably in 2021, we were B K D. 2022, we switched to Forvis and then
My memory serves that you were always Mr. Kemp.
Touche. And then this year, we are Forvis Mazars. Hopefully, the main reason for our name change this year was to kind of help our international entities. So we did partner with Mazars, which is based out of France. But hopefully for your group, that name change meant nothing. Hopefully still great service from, from your local team. That's the way we pride ourselves on. And that's the way we'll continue to be, no matter what our name is. And, and despite the jokes, Forvis is not a flea and tick killer for animals. So we, we've heard it all. So with that, you got, like Julie said, we're going to head over a little bit over the audit scope and results. And then a couple of things that, just for informational purposes, and we'll do hit a few financial highlights. So for you on council, what do your, to us, what is most important to you? We did our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. We believe the financial statements and the various opinion units are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So clean, unmodified opinions. So great job, Julie, Trina, and team. Always appreciate working with them. They are very detailed and very passionate about what they do. They're also good to let us know if there's any unique situations that arise throughout the year. So we can talk to, talk about it in advance and come to a, to a good answer. And then that allows us to, to be efficient and effective when we're on site and completing our audit. You'll see a couple of paragraphs up there about no reportable findings. Because you do receive or have received more than $750,000 in federal awards, you're required to go through an audit in accordance with uniform guidance. Primarily, this is still the spend down of COVID money. This has hit most all cities the past two or three years. Y'all will probably have one more audit required under that, that grant dollars. But in that process, we do look at your internal controls over financial reporting, look at your internal controls over compliance, and then we also test your compliance with the specific rules related to the programs that we have to test. In this case, allowable expenditures for the most part and reporting to the federal government. Happy to report there were no findings related to that audit as well. And it goes back to your record keeping and your controls in place. We do have certain required communications to those charged with governance. Julie mentioned the annual comprehensive financial report. Within note one of that 170-page document, there is an outline of the city's significant accounting policies. Happy to report that there are no unusual policies or methods and really no alternative accounting treatments that are unique to the city or to the, to the government as a whole. Y'all do follow generally accepted accounting principles, you know, right down the middle of the road. All accounting or all account, state and financial statements do have significant estimates and policies. We have listed out the ones that we think are the most significant. Primarily, the, the ones that could change the financial statements pretty significantly are related to your pension plan with T M R S and your other post-employment benefit plans, as well as your landfill post-closeer care liability. That one, I believe your current estimate is your landfill has about 63 years of, of useful life to it. And the standards want you to estimate what that liability is going to be in 63 years, based on your, the usage that, that has currently happened. And again, that is an estimate that who knows what that liability, ultimate liability will be. And then if somebody, you know, a citizen picked up your annual comprehensive financial report and was looking at it, some of the, the areas that they may have additional questions on would be your net pension liability, your total O P E V liability. And this year, we did note that there was quite a bit of construction activity and a lot of economic development agreements or commitments that were in place that were not necessarily a liability as of September 30th.
O P E V stands for?
I'm sorry, other post-employment benefit.
Thank you.
Right now, that is a, a life insurance plan that you get through T M R S. As you all approach 25,000 in population, at some point, you may be required to offer retiree health. But there's different ways to structure, structure that. There's lots of various ways that we see that across the state of Texas. But, but good question. I should have explained that. And like, like I was saying, y'all had had a lot of commitments before year end that had not, you know, resulted into a liability yet. So we did disclose, or y'all did disclose that in a footnote as a commitment. From time to time, we will propose audit adjustments. Most of these, we know coming into the audit that we're going to, to adjust. It's mainly things that are just year-end adjustments that really do not affect the general fund or anything of that nature. It's just something required by the standards. And again, it's related to the pension and other post-employment benefits and a lot of new standards related to leases, subscription-based information technology arrangements, and just a plethora of standards that y'all have had to adopt over the past, say, 10 years. There were no adjustments that we requested to be made that were not made. So the, all, your team agreed with us and posted entries to their records as well. And again, no significant concerns about your accounting principles or your judgments. Our, the standards board has been, has been busy over the past. I think in, I know for a fact, 10 years ago, you adopted G A S B 68, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Standard 68, which was related to pensions. Fast forward 10 years and now we're up to 101. They do go in sequential order. So you're talking about 30 standards in the past 10 years. A couple of ones that are coming up, again, these are just more for your information related to compensated absences, various risk disclosures. There's going to be some changes to the way the financial reporting model looks, for those that enjoy reading your annual comprehensive financial report before you go to sleep at night. And then certain disclosures of capital assets. I don't think any of these are going to have an impact on your actual amounts recorded in your financial statements, except the compensated absences could potentially. We've got to look at that. What they're trying to do is get all governments' kind of uniformity on how they present and disclose, you know, vacation, sick pay, things of that nature. And there's a couple of them that will be impacted next year, and then the other, the last two will take place in 2026. And this is not Kerrville-specific. This is just a friendly reminder to all of our clients about just being ever vigilant on cybersecurity. We continue to see episodes across our client base, but just the, the people that perpetrate, perpetrate these crimes, they're always seem to be a step ahead. And they're getting even more and more sophisticated on the tools that they use to commit these events. So we've seen cities lose financial information and, you know, takes them a year to recover. So.
They don't.
Yeah. And sometimes they don't. And then quickly, this is government-wide revenues by source. So this is basically all of your funds together. You'll see that property tax is, if I get my colors right, 26% of your total revenue source. And charges for service, like water bills, permits, things of that nature are 35%. So this is all presented in your management discussion and analysis, which is at the beginning of your annual comprehensive financial report. And which is about a 10-page read of here's the highlights of 2024 compared to 2023, any of the significant changes. And it also gives a brief snapshot of your 25 budget.
Question?
Okay.
Charges for services, does it include the sale of water? Is that, are you combining both the general and the water?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But in, in the M D N A, there will be a separate column for both your business-type activities, which would be your water, those that are designed to run like a, a business versus your governmental activities.
Enterprise fund?
Yes. And again, this, this graph as well combines both business type and governmental. And you'll see, you know, kind of the outlay of, of expenses where that is. Public, public safety, of course, is 35% of total expenses, which is what we see across our client base. Again, last number we're going to talk about, we talk about, I talked about the net pension liability or net pension obligation quite a bit. You'll see that we kind of gave a three-year history of, of the funding. As of 24, you were, you had an $8.6 million liability, but you were 92% funded. 2022, you actually see, you actually had an asset. T M R S is on a calendar year basis. So for those that follow the stock market, 1231, '22 was a banner year in the market. And so the investments did really well. And most cities across the state of Texas flipped into an asset. So you were kind of 100, you were 100% funded. Then '23 hit and the market went down. And so, and then back in '24, it came back up a little bit. You are, you are paying what the actuary tells you to pay. And so, you know, based on that, you're 92% funded and, but that number will continue to fluctuate year over year. That is based on a 6.75% rate of return on an annual basis. Also in a report, it will tell you what happens if, if it drops down to 5.75% or increases to 7.75%. The numbers swing pretty significantly. So that's why we say that it's an assumption and it's, it's a pretty significant assumption. But, you know, they'll say that, most people say an 80% funded plan is a very well-funded plan, just as, as a reference. And in fund balance, this is specifically to the general fund, your unassigned fund balance at September 30th, '24 was 35% of your general fund expenditures. The Government Finance Officers Association says that you need to have about two months of expenses in, in unassigned, which is about 16%. So you are well above that threshold. And the G F O A, I failed to mention it earlier, but y'all did get that award for your 2023 act for. And I know y'all are going to submit the 2024 act for as well for that award. And we believe that, that y'all should be able to get that. We did answer all of their questions that they had on 2023, and it was pretty minimal. So just great job overall. And happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Any questions for Mr. Kemp? No. According to the agenda bill, recommended action is to accept as presented. Do we need to have a motion to that effect? Or, okay. Any questions for Mr. Kemp? Any mountains of praise for Julie Behrens and her staff? Mr. Kemp, I appreciate your coming and talking to us again. I can't wait to see what the company's name is next. All right, we need a motion then to accept.
Make the motion to accept the A C F R as presented.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And it's unanimous. Item six B, request for variance, application of building code sprinklers per section 26-259 of the city's code of ordinances for property at 613 Rock Creek Loop. We'll start with Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I'll give a quick introduction. I'll turn it over to Mr. Perry. Mr. Perry did request an appeal on a variance to the Building Board of Appeals and Adjustments. They did meet, but they were unable to finalize their decision within the timeframe dictated by the code. And as such, this case is referred to the City Council for final determination. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Perry.
Mr. Perry, you and I, coming to the microphone or that, wherever's easiest for you. And state your name and address for the
I'm sorry?
State your name and address for the
Richard Perry, Rick Perry, 405 Spring Mill Drive, Kerrville.
Thank you.
Just a general comment based on what you all have been discussing with the previous lady with regard to elder care homes. I would most encourage and, and would even be a part of, of sitting down as, with, with regard to coming up with some provisions, how elder care homes differ from maybe what the general boarding home umbrella looks like. There are, I mean, seven years ago, well, I've been in elder care for 20 years. I've got a elder care franchise where we go into the home. And seven years ago, when I opened my first elder disability care home, I hadn't even heard of elder care personal care homes. Did some research. I think there's close to 50,000 of these in Phoenix, Arizona. Of course, you know, the population is larger, I realize that. But it's, it's going to be something that's increasing with, what, 37% of our population over 60 years old here in Kerrville. When I opened my franchise, they were overwhelmed by the demographics of the number that were over 60 years old in this community. So I think it's going to be ongoing situation and
Thanks for your comment. Can we go on to the variance?
Yes. As was mentioned, the B B A A did not come up with a, a decision about the, the sprinklers in the personal care home at 613 Rock Creek Loop. I guess I'm just asking for a reasonable, you know, accommodation request. I feel like I almost have an L S A T degree after reading through some of these provisions. But basically, in the appeal, it says that you, in section 26, 257, in the appeal, that number six is to come up with an alternative but equally effective way of addressing the code provision. And then also any consideration from the person agreed by the decision. I feel like there's an effective way for me to address this in the fact that I have 24/7 staff in, at this property, sometimes three people at a time. Smoke detectors, nine of them, fire extinguishers, five exits, a lot of things there that, that provide safety in, in case of a situation like this with a, with a fire. She, it was mentioned about the sprinkler system and the cost. I have received a partial estimate to retrofit this piece of property, which is an, you know, an old, older home in the River Hill neighborhood, to go in and retrofit that. And I've, I've got differing opinions that, that have been given to me. But I got a bid for, just for the, to install the sprinklers, which is, is a construction issue, is $21,000 approximately, and then could be another $20,000 for plumbing. You have to have the right pressure. You have to have the right gallons per minute, all those sort of things, even though it's a, a, Marshall, help me here. R D, the system, the 13D system, which hooks into your existing water system. You don't have to bring in a whole new system, but you do have to but you do have to fit it to your existing system. So I, you know, I'm, I definitely don't want to have any safety issues with the people that live there. And I'm not trying to, to get around that. But I just feel like this is over and above what's necessary to have the, the safety of these, of the residents. I feel like a lot of these standards were written in the section 3028. It seems like it applies to these sober living homes more than it would an elder disability care home, such that I run. No parking, no smoking, no, you know, anything. I mean, a lot of people in the neighborhood that I've talked to don't even know that we're there. And several have mentioned, I wish we had more homes like this available. So I think we, I think, you know, my point is I have all the emergency precautions in place. And I just am, am not under the feeling that it's, it's necessary to have a sprinkler suppression system and asking for a variance for that.
Can I ask a few questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Both sides of the house, will they still remain two separate properties?
Yes.
So there are on parcel A and parcel B?
Yes.
There was a wall separating the house down the middle?
Yes.
Has that wall been pierced or breached? Is there a door in that wall?
There's a fire door.
There's a fire door?
Yes.
Is that door open generally or is it...?
Generally clo, well, it's closed for the most part. The only time that it would be open is just for a caregiver to pass through.
But generally it's closed?
Pardon?
There's no mingling between the two sides?
No, there's no reason for that because we have...
Well, I mean, if person inside A wants to visit person inside B, do they have to go outside? How, how do they get there?
We would probably open the door and let them pass through and then just close the door. You know? It's not going to be required that because of the timing of, of things, when I open that original home, the second home is not, or the first home is not going to be required to be, have a sprinkler system.
These regulations are not to be punitive. They're to protect the public.
I understand that.
And the people who'll be occupying your facility are more vulnerable than other members of our population. Do you think you have adequate staff to get everybody out safely?
Yes, sir, most definitely.
On both sides or just one side or...?
On both sides. We, we, I have adequate staff all the time on both sides, 24/7. One staff member lives there.
And you conduct drills? Are there fire drills?
I can start.
Just ask, are there presently?
No, there are not presently fire drills. We have a, when, when we opened the first house, we had to, I believe this is correct, Donna, that we had to come up with where people would exit from...
Like a map, like in a hotel?
From, from certain, for certain rooms. And every, every room has an exit, pretty much within 10 feet.
Not to be snickety, but people of a certain age may not remember what the map says at a time of crisis. Do you have someone to guide them out, not...
Yes, sir, we do.
May I ask him questions of the fire marshal for a minute? I'm not an expert on fire, nor do I care to be an expert on fire. Once that wall between those two structures has been breached with a doorway, does it affect the original side or is it not?
Very good, sir. Depending on what door was placed, that existing wall should be a one-hour wall in a two-family dwelling duplex. Now, we don't, not being in the home, we don't know what's been placed there. So that could be breached.
We haven't inspected that.
No, sir, we have not. And it's imperative that people in these facilities, whether it's group homes or elderly care, are able of self-preservation in an emergency. And I understand that some of these individuals are not able to do that.
Right.
Any other questions from you, Mayor?
Any questions for the fire marshal, we have enough.
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the state law for fire suppression systems in nursing homes?
Nursing homes? That is going to require a full 13 system.
Say, say that again?
That's going to require a full fire sprinkler system as per NFPA 13. There's three different types of systems that can be used depending on the occupancy of the building. So it could be a full 13 system, which means everything underneath ceiling is protected like it is in this room, and including the attic space. That is for a full 13 system. Then it gets to what we call a 13R system, which is, still has its own dedicated fire main like a full 13 system does. And it's used for hotels, motels, dormitories. Everything but the attic is sprinkled. And then when it comes to one and two-family dwellings, they do allow a 13D system, which is a system that still protects kind of the living space, but it's tied in. Instead of having an own dedicated fire main, bringing in an additional fire line into the home, it is used off the domestic water system.
Okay, because I had read that residential buildings used as care facilities, such as assisted living or nursing homes, must have fire sprinklers installed. Do you agree with that?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions for the park chief? Any questions for Mr. Perry?
Could I make another comment, Mayor? That, you know, I'm, in reading this International Building Code, it talks about a facility, which misuse had, was kind of brought up that differentiation between a facility and a resident home. And that, you know, we're not providing medical care, we're providing custodial care. Any medical care that comes in comes through a home health or a hospice company. We don't employ nurses. We just have the custodial care.
Are your bathrooms ADA compliant?
Yes, we've had to widen some doorways and that sort of thing to make it compliant, to be able to fit, you know, walkers and wheelchairs through.
Other questions? Go ahead, please.
Single, is it a single story or is there, is there a second story? Is this all one level?
There's, there is a second story. I have a, my manager lives upstairs.
So now, now your tenants live upstairs?
I have one resident on one side that's upstairs. We have a, a automatic stair lift.
So how many square feet are in, for the duplexes?
The, the houses are approximately 3,200 square feet, four bedrooms, four and a half baths.
Oh, pretty good size. You have five, you said five exits out of that?
Yes, sir.
If that stair lift were to become disabled during a fire, how would that person on the second story get out?
We would have to assist them.
Well, for me, every business has one thing in common, and that's staff shortages. And I am not willing to risk the health and the safety and the welfare of our vulnerable population out of convenience on wanting to save some money. And that's how I see it.
Well, we have to have staff there 24/7 because all of our residents require that. So there, there's not a shortage of, of staff. I have plenty of good staff members.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Perry?
I would just like to make an, an observation. You know, this is probably exactly why we have these strict codes. Because when you go in like Lennar to build a residential neighborhood, you don't do it with the thinking, oh, well, maybe someday there will be a need for a senior living facility, because that's not the intent. And I think that if we said yes to this and yes to the others, you could have other people in other neighborhoods say, gosh, I have three bedrooms. I could make some money. But it wasn't, it wasn't built to be a combination of uses like this. And I think the reason we are talking about so much of this is because your building wasn't slated to be a senior living facility from the very beginning. You know, you're retrofitting something that was meant to be a single-user home. And, and I think it can be done. And while I, I do believe in the cause, I really do. I think that it would seem like an ideal situation to be in if I was the one needing that facility. But then maybe the thing to do is to build one somewhere where you can make it from scratch, exactly how it should be. You know, probably spending the same money, you're going to, maybe less than what you're doing now to retrofit this one. So that's my thinking. That's probably why I won't vote for it, because I, I think we're trying to fit a square peg in a round hole. And I think sometimes...
Thank you. Thank you. Jeff?
I get hung up on the law. I mean, Marshall, like you said, law, correct? Texas law requires sprinkler systems?
The adopted code is adopted law, yes.
And, Mr. Perry, I, I know that it's, it's a weird situation. Because half your, half your property is in the old code, but this, or the property's in the new code. But, I mean, all I want to say, yes, 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 let's do this because it's good for the community, it's good for the people. We also have to look at our, our responsibility as elected officials, as well as for the well-being of our citizens, and also by upholding the laws of the state of Texas. It's, I know you don't provide hospice care, it's not that kind of facility, but looks like, correct me if I'm wrong, and I've been wrong several times today, but under 308.3 Institutional Group 1 and 2, foster care facility. That's kind of what this sounds like to me. So I've got to go with what, what our staff and our fire marshals and our inspectors say. And, I mean, it's that weird situation though, because half is half and half is new. But, you know, the new code has been adopted and that's what we have to go by.
Anybody else? I have a, I have a sincere and troubling problem with that door, which has not been inspected, which may, or may not, cause the older part of this, the, the first group home, the first elder care home, to no longer be in compliance. And I am hoping that we will inspect that at our earliest, at our earliest legal opportunity.
Let me go back on that comment. And I'm going to come back over here to Mr. Rice and Mr. Hayes. Because we discussed at length on this, if we were to replat to make it one address. But if we did that, then the entire property would fall under the new code. Is that correct?
Sort of, yes, sir. So the concern was, we were trying to find, we did, we wanted to do all of our due diligence to see if there was any possible way to, to, to make this fit within the confines of the law and the ordinances. So one of the options was, that we, we pursued, was if they replatted it and it, and it fell under one plat versus separate plats, then it would grandfather end of the thing. Well, the concern was, as soon as, if they did that, and then there was, the, the, the space opened up because it is a one-hour wall, that would change the occupancy of the entire house, therefore making it actually more strict or more stringent on the requirements because it's no longer five and under, it would fall under a larger occupancy load. And both y'all, please correct me if I'm wrong on, on some of that, but I knew that that was what, what one of the issues was by creating that, or opening that door up, or opening that firewall up.
Which now has been done.
Potentially, which that's the first I've heard of that. So that potentially could cause some other things beyond this, beyond this variance itself. Yes, sir.
I'm concerned about the resident that's upstairs, too. I don't know that that was contemplated either. All right, do we have a motion then to grant or deny this variance?
I make a motion to deny the variance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to deny this variance. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And it's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Item 7A, appointment to the library advisory board. Which of you is going to take the lead?
Me.
Go ahead.
Okay, we have some great applicants. And, and we're very fortunate that we have one that's especially long history and education. I think really fits in with the library's mission. And it's Lisa Casiola. And we, I recommend that we appoint Lisa to the, the library board.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Okay, the fun starts for her now. Parks and Rec, who's going to take the lead?
I will take the lead on that one, Mr. Mayor. Talking to Councilmember McKinney, as well as city staff, we would like to table the appointments until April. Get a few more applicants, there's been late applicants received last minute. We are also going to be receiving or welcoming our new Parks and Recreation Director in May. So Parks and Rec's quarterly meeting that would be in April, they can push to May and have with the new Parks, Parks and Rec Director as well. So I would like to make the motion to table this until April. So point, Parks and Recreation Board members.
There's a second. Motion's been made and seconded. I would remind people that those who have been appointed to the Parks and Rec Board serve until they are replaced. And so reasonably, they serve reasonably until they're replaced. And...
And the applicants we've received will stay on for consideration.
Nice amount.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion seconded to table. Any discussion? I don't even know if we can have a discussion on those tables. All in favor, so vote. And it is tabled. Appointment to the Kura Emergency 911 Board of Managers Chief. Also, nice editorial today.
Mayor, Council, this is a, a recommendation to appoint Lieutenant Mary Krebs to the Kura 911 Emergency Managers Board to replace Frank, who was formerly our representative on that board.
Is she aware of this appointment?
She is.
She's in favor of it?
Well, she's kind of volunt, no, she absolutely is. She's served on this board in the past and she was very willing to step up and...
Do you appoint or do we actually take a vote?
I, I believe this is on you, yes.
It's us. So is there a motion then to appoint Lieutenant Krebs?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion seconded? All in favor, so vote. All right.
Thank you.
Tell her she's up. There's no need to go into executive session. Items for future agendas.
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Since we just discussed it, I would like to have a, to revisit the ordinance on the variance distance, dependent upon if it's a sober living home or a senior assisted living area, something like that. So we can come back and revisit that because the one on Barnett Street appears to be an AA foster house. Where my notes are.
The 976.
976 Barnett Street was a AA house. Well, that, I'm guessing is a sober living home. This would be a senior living home. So if we could revisit that ordinance to, to look at the feasibility of, okay, maybe not have sober living, sober living, but we could allow a different type of property.
How many different kinds of these kind of houses do we have?
We, we will have to come back with some workshop information. We'll have to, we'll have to get some more information to get with y'all on that. So we got, we got our direction.
I'm happy to second his request to have this on a future agenda. Any other items for future agendas? Hearing none, I adjourn the meeting. 7:20.